I'm gonna bring the town order selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. All three selectmen are present, town administrators present. We also have here tonight the tax collector, town moderator, town clerk, and somebody else might be around the corner. We are, Leo Martell is video recording these and Linda Nickerson will upload those to the town website and to YouTube. They have some old business in front of us here. And the old business is our previous meeting minutes from February thirteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, secondly, discussion.
Lucky.
Well-written. We had a busy meeting last weekend with our town budget and we had a lot of good comments through that meeting and it went very well. All in favor? I'm gonna wrap up the public comment if anybody's not on the agenda tonight. Any public comment so far? We'll have another one at the end of the meeting. No hands, I'll move on. Tonight, the first thing on the agenda, we have a town dedication of the annual report. And tonight, our dedication is for Donna, Donald, and Eden Larson. I'd like you guys to come up. Come right up to the front here, take a seat. I'd like to read a brief description of some of the things you guys have done in town through your years here. And probably do a little ad lib as we go.
Okay, Donald and Eden Larson. Don and Eden Larson originally lived in San Diego, California. They're lost, not ours. They worked, they worked there and they raised their only child Jay for over thirty-eight years. They first discovered Dunbarren on a family holiday visit to visit friends who had retired in the area. While exploring the countryside, they came across flip block farms, fell in love with how beautiful it was, and ended up purchasing their last lot. After they both retired in two thousand and seven, they began the process of designing and building the home which they currently reside in. Don worked in, as an advertising executive in both radio and television, and also ran video production, video production business that Eden was actively involved in as his partner. When Eden retired, she worked as executive assistants to a large RV business and also worked many years in, as a production crew for a video company that they filmed everything from car racing to TV ads. She was known to hang out out of helicopters in pursuit of the perfect shot. They were married in nineteen sixty-eight in Frisco, Colorado, and celebrated their fiftieth wedding anniversary at a huge surprise party at the home of their close friends Karen and Tom Cassano. They were joined by local friends as well as friends and family from across the country. Since moving to Dunbarren, they have become very involved with the Dunbarren Garden Club, where Eden even served as president. Eden has also been a diehard supporter and volunteer of the Town Curios on the Common, which supports the community church. That's right across the street, spending dollars wisely. Good margins we've got. This is rarely a volunteer effort in Dunbarren that does, there is rarely a volunteer effort in Dunbarren that doesn't involve a Larson. Don has pioneered two passion projects here in Dunbarren. The most, at least the most ubiquitous one I see everywhere is the Reeds Across Dunbarren. And the other one is Flags Across Dunbarren. And we, both visible to the entire public. Eden and Jay are huge supporters of the work behind the scenes to help them get ready to get this work done. Don and Eden were the driving force behind the town renovation. They organized Arts on the Common, a widely popular event that helped raise awareness and fundraise for the project. And that's beautiful upstairs, which has been renovated, and thank you for assisting with that. That was a great ass, a great contribution. Eden is a passionate supporter of public libraries and learning spaces. Eden's favorite space in their home is her personal library, which houses over two hundred books from her private collection. Anyone that knows Don and Eden knows that retirement is not a word in their vocabulary as they continue to be involved in the town. Thank you, Don and Eden, for everything you do in Dunbarren.
Don, I'd also like to say a few things. Don, as, when you came on as cemetery trustee and then you chaired that cemetery, we had never seen changes in our cemetery, town cemeteries, since you've been on that board. And now Justin's taking the reins over on that. You've got some good leadership, but huge changes. Those cemeteries now we can be proud of. Before Don took them over, they were in pretty sad shape. We've got new fences out there, we've got better people mowing them. And all that work has been done and led with Don and, you know, we have all of these new benches to sit on, there's just huge amounts of things he's done for our town and it goes, without saying, our cover, Mike, if you can show them the cover on there. You know, big big the flag, that is, you know, what Don represents for our town when you see these flags when you drive through, so.
Don, Don was, he would always do something great for the town and then ask for permission if he could do it. I said, that was his MO, because he would always make it happen. He'd think, can I do this, guys? We said, well, it's already done. So I salute you for that, sir.
We did have to curtail a few times off, but.
That's the whole thing, you know. You don't get if you don't ask.
That's right.
Even Eden, as, we finally, after how many years, Eden comes in and says, can I do this? And we said, go ahead, go for it. But we're, they were trainable and we loved them.
But the donation Don has asked for across this community to help out different events we've had, I don't think we've had anybody else ask for as many donations and get them because of the way they were asked for, you know, and I think that goes a long way.
Well, the Flags and Reeds program is, you know, I'm an idea guy, you know, I'm in advertising, so I'm an idea guy. But it wouldn't be successful without all the donations from our community to make it successful. And they've helped fund it now for eight years, going on nine years for Reeds and five years for the Flags. And that keeps it going. So it's, you know, it's a labor of love.
Yeah.
And the donuts and coffee and Reeds Across Dunbarren helps too.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Old Home Day Committee, Don has been on the Old Home Day Committee for, how long? A long time, as long as I have.
Arts on the Common as well.
Arts on the Common and all, all the work he does with promoting the, the event, the mailings, the, all the photography work, I mean, it's just, you know, you, you can't find somebody that can do that kind of work on a volunteer basis that don't want to get paid. And, you know, I also, we, we encourage him to bring desserts and snacks to the meetings. So Eden will bake cookies and he'll bring them.
Go ahead.
And Eden irons the bows for the Reeds.
We have a nice, long list of everything that they've been involved with, very long list, and something they'll be able to cherish for years and.
Did you read the committees they were on in the years?
No, why don't we read the committees they're on?
Don and Eden Larson, Garden Club, two thousand and nine to present. Town Hall Restoration Committee, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen to twenty twenty-three. Arts on the Common, two thousand and eleven to twenty twenty. Elected Officials, two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-one. Don Larson, Old Home Day Committee, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three. Cemetery Trustees, two thousand and seventeen to twenty twenty. Reeds Across Dunbarren, two thousand and seventeen to present. Flags Around Dunbarren, two twenty, two thousand and twenty-one to present. Nominated with a Small Town American Civic Volunteer Award in twenty twenty-one. They've left your mark.
And he's on tail line.
First, we have a read it, but we're gonna have a revised one in the form of signing it.
So we have a revised one, we'll sign it and give you guys a signed copy. It'll be worth big money someday.
One over here. We'll get a vote to be able to do Flag Retirement Program of John Stark, J., which is fourteenth of people, but we'll probably do this on Saturday, the Flag. And we'll put down pavers so we don't scorch the grass.
Jim, for you tonight.
Hopefully, there's grass and not.
Just for you tonight, we're gonna let it go.
They had to cancel this last.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We weren't speculating, I bet it's she we didn't, because she hired her, we were trying to figure out who it would be, so.
You, you both represent a true volunteer. You're a true volunteer.
Thanks for having me, Don. Thank you.
Thank you. This was an incredible honor.
And.
See ya.
Everybody's out the door now.
Have fun.
There's a budget that we have to.
Let us know if anything happens.
It's gonna be online.
Come on, the front door's coming.
Thank you.
I still gotta work. You don't think I'm gonna be out working though?
Take it easy. Take it easy.
There's no fun taking it easy, though.
You guys all made it possible.
Thank you. You know, I figured we got no shit, we got our child eating, we love kids.
It's really well.
I thought I was gonna ask, I have a second.
I'm proud of you. Hello, how's it going?
It's no answer.
Oh, sorry. Take the party outside.
Yeah, pretty much. Some beer, maybe or something.
The beer pool is right.
Thanks again, you guys.
Can you go on to the next item on the agenda? We're gonna sign and approve. This is an easy one, those four for us. Sign and approve the warrant and budget and the MS six thirty-six. Lean has it set up for us already. Looks like a lot of signatures, so. Well, we're finishing signing those off. Thanks for getting those put together for us, Lean. Christine, Recreation Chair, requesting a community color run on Saturday, May tenth.
Yeah.
Come on up.
So, we are, this is Karen Cassar, and she is the chair for the committee to partner with Dunbarren PTO. We're, we've been throwing around doing a color run, ideally looking to start at Dunbarren Elementary, from just next to the field. We come out on Robert Rogers, head right onto Robert Rogers, cross thirteen to Tucker Hill, go to Mansion, and then come back. So we come back Tucker, cross thirteen again, come back down Robert Rogers, go to the lower parking lot of the elementary school, and run around the school to finish in the field. So it's about two miles.
Will you please, we'll help you cross the highway?
That's the hope. Yeah, we would need to get a permit.
Right, I think state permit.
Yep, state permit, so, one, we wanted to make sure that it was okay to do this route, to do it the weekend of Mother's Day, and it'd be that Saturday. And we've been talking with Chief from Malard to help us coordinate permitting, and I think we also need to have something signed by the town and we.
I think as long as you get the permit, I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have an issue.
Okay.
You guys go look if it comes out.
It's a run, run walk, or is it?
It's, yeah. It's not timed, yeah, it's not timed. I've actually never run one, but I don't know if you've seen, they kind of will throw, it's like a color powder, you know, as the runners run by, and it's more of like a fun, you know, building encouragement. And it would be for the students and the town to.
It's not like a brew-to-brew week, a brew at one. So I'm good at it.
Nope.
It's one I'm wanting to run.
Exactly, yeah. And then, yeah, Chief from Malard had suggested not, because originally we were gonna do like a loop up there, you know, Tucker Hill to Mansion and then come back up thirteen, but he had suggested it'd probably be a little easier to do the detail if we avoided that route, so.
Yeah, thirteen's a, state is getting very, very antsy when it gets.
Exactly.
I mean, just the parade, we have a challenge with.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering how, yeah, that works with the parade.
Is that the PTO or the rec committee that's in charge?
Both.
Okay.
It would be the PTO putting it, yeah, putting it on, and the proceeds would benefit Dunbarren Rec.
Great. Do you, would you like, like, donors will sponsor people to do the race?
Yeah, so, yes, exactly. And there'd be like a registration fee and there can be like donors to sponsor color stations or, yeah, so, yeah, to support the race.
Excellent.
In conjunction with that, I, for the Dunbarren Rec hat, I was looking to bring Arts on the Common back and actually do it that same weekend, so the events would try to tie into that. So, that was the other.
So, looks like the board has consensus?
For the run.
If they need a letter from the town, just do it up and sign it by yourself.
Yep, I've done it before, yeah.
Now, the Arts on the Common?
Yes.
That was originally designed to help support the funding for, for the library renovation. What's the purpose of bringing it back? And the monies would go where?
Either to rec or to town, it didn't really matter to me. It was kind of one of those where I was like, I've heard folks want it coming, like, I've heard folks enjoy it and want it to come back.
There's a lot of out-of-town folks who come and enjoy that.
Yeah, so.
They'd enjoy that, that show.
Yeah, so I.
And the Larson's were created to help put that together.
And, and also the, uh.
Consensus?
No, across the street here, the Arts on the Common.
Oh, um, Reeds?
Pat.
Greenhouse. Yeah, yeah, Murphy, Murphy.
Murphy, yeah.
Pat Murphy has a lot of experience with that.
I've been told to pick her ear.
Okay.
But, I think in my head, where we're talking about Mother's Day weekend, trying to tie the events so that it has more of a draw, to bring moms out and kind of like that treat as well.
I would be concerned about the logistics at this point, because it may be getting late in the season for exhibitors to plan on that.
Okay.
That'd be one of my concerns. Logistics of tents, police support, and there's a lot of incidental costs which you gotta look at too.
Bathrooms, toilets.
Bathrooms, totally, yeah. And I'll be one example, like, I think our town, the library's been plagued with toilet issues since we built.
Yeah.
And they used to open it up for the public like that, that would be a no-go, so we'd have to get porta potties, for example. I think there's a lot of challenges.
Okay.
But the thing is, it may be too late in the season for this year, but I would maybe consider it for next year, but needs to be, you need to really get in the weeds and plan in this now. You may be running out of time, that's my concern. Because you don't want to just pull it off and it comes off like.
Yeah, yeah.
And then half, what you, what you expected when it comes up, be half of them, you want a big event with a lot of invites to people and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
And you gotta get in touch with all those artist communities.
Right.
And the other thing, I think, make sure that the money is going to a clear place, like the rec committee.
Yeah.
You know, so that way, even if it builds up in there, you can use it for something in the future.
But, you know, I, I'd suggest not only the rec committee, but if the PTO was some of your sponsors for that, some could go to the PTO. You gotta look at that of all the, you know, after all the expenses are paid for.
Right.
You gotta look at, well, where do you want the charity money to go?
Right.
PTO would be a great organization, they could be a great partner with you on this. Because there's a lot of logistics, I think they did a lot of work trying to pull it off. And then, inclement weather, what are you doing in inclement weather too?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of planning that gotta go into it, and so I, I'm hesitant to say yes to that without, if you look at that. Conceptually, definitely in favor of it.
And you don't have to do it as big as they did either the first year. They grew that as well through the years and made it pretty, pretty darn large at the end.
But it may be coming late in the season for people to stop planning on that. Just thinking of the box, I mean, I could be completely wrong, that's why I think, I think Pat would be, Murphy would be a great resource, and you gotta talk to her.
Okay.
The Larson's always helped with that, I would say that.
Yeah.
But the run, I tell you, the run is a go, is a go, so.
Perfect.
At the minimum, you get the run.
That's fine, totally fine.
But a great idea, though, I'd bring it back, because I've heard people, my sister-in-law actually come up from Pelham yesterday, come up from here, just enjoy it.
Right.
Can I just speak on that? If she's able to get information from Pat, Pat shares everything that she knows and how she managed it, and then has others, are they, would, can they come back to the board and say, this is the plan that we have? Or is it?
I mean, I'm not opposed to having it come back, I just, I hear what Mike is saying about the challenges of planning something in, in three months.
Yeah.
Public comment?
Yep, can you drop the email?
Yeah, I'm good.
Name, address.
Ray Plant, Moose Point Road. If you have any, you know, you wanna try to do it this year, I would recommend maybe get with the Old Home Day and try to do it this year in conjunction with Old Home Day, because there's already a whole planning crew with that and everything like that, it might enhance that.
But there's not.
Yeah, but Old, Old Home Day, I gotta, is, is basically designed for citizens of Dunbarren, is not really an external event. This, and Arts on the Common really draws a draw, it's like the entire area.
Okay.
And so, because, I like giving free ice cream, I like giving it to our Dunbarren residents.
Yeah, not everybody. Not the whole world.
Yeah.
So are there things to consider, and you want to just hold off a year and schedule it all for next year and maybe make it some, some grander event, but whatever you guys want to do, just go back.
And I just remember one year was a rainstorm and they, it was over two days.
Yeah.
And they canned one day and then the following day was still okay. When they pulled it off in one day, so you may want to consider a one-day event rather than over two, as an, as an initial start.
Yeah.
But you need to get, more planning, you gotta get that history too, that would be helpful, I think.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Sounds great, thanks to have you guys with us.
Absolutely.
Anything else for our board?
We had a great basketball season. Everything's wrapped up. We've got one team playing in the Bo, oh my gosh, the BAC Tournament, Bo Athletic Club, I just like forgot their name. And, yeah, we had over seventy-five kids participating in the program. We did our first end-of-season celebration to recognize all the players and brought all the families and, it was really just an idea, and it was pretty cool to have everyone come together and celebrate the season.
Yep.
Just, and, I mean, as a whole, it was like, every team sees their team, but to see all of the teams and all of the kids and all of the families.
It was really huge.
Yeah, it just is really, it was really neat to kind of bring it all together, so.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty interesting event, and I was, my son's a part of the basketball program, and I thought it was pretty interesting to see how many people were actually involved in the program, because again, we show up to practice a couple times a week in the games.
Yeah.
To see maybe a couple teams, but didn't realize there was seventy-five kids involved in the program.
Where did they all get together?
At the community center.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, so.
And you brought it home to Dunbarren.
Yeah, it was cool.
Yeah.
So everyone had their blue Dunbarren shirts on and the gym was just full. It was just really dope, it's very nice.
That's what that building was meant to be used for, true.
Yeah, so.
Because, you know, you were stuck, we were stuck in Paris, you didn't want to go all the way to Bo to participate over there.
Yeah.
And bringing it back to Dunbarren, I think meant a lot.
Yeah.
I think that's where you get your success.
Yeah.
Are we like it?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was good, good season.
Good.
All right, sounds good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing back from you about the artist thing. Conceptually, we're all, I think we're consensus, we're all in favor, but the thing is, it just, don't cut yourself short, because it may need some serious planning.
Yeah.
Okay?
Jeff Crosby's on the agenda next, he's not here. Do you want to give us any type of update?
He said he would be here for seven thirty.
All right, well, one week long, we'll do a mailbox. We have an email here from Ron Jarvis, I don't know if you guys got a chance to see it. Apparently, he's requesting, a long time ago, they used to have a neighbor down there that would plow out the KTFCA parking lot, down off the Holiday Shore Drive on Gorapond. And they wouldn't do it on all storms, but as you guys know, the last two or three years, our storms have been minimal. So a couple inches would come, a couple inches would melt, the ground's not really frozen. So the plowing down there became very minimal, and when they needed help, a neighbor did it. Well, this is more like an old-fashioned way to re-plowing, a couple times a week, at least once a week, and the storms are pretty major. There was a couple calls made to see who could plow it, Woody heard of it and went down with our transfer station truck and opened it up this last time.
Who allowed that?
Well, it's town property, so.
That's not a, I mean, Jeff can use it anytime he needs a pickup truck to go plow now?
Jeff could use it if they needed, but it won't.
I don't know, it wasn't designed as a plow truck.
Yeah, we plow.
No, we plowed the transfer station, but I don't know, road plow truck.
Not down the road, Mike, it's just a parking lot.
Okay.
So, it's kind of tight out there with the trees.
Do we pay, pay, Woody to plow that too?
Just as regular hours, just like it comes up here and snow blows the town.
Was it overtime, or was it considered overtime?
No, not overtime. This was done after the storm had passed, several days after, and it's not something needs to be done during the storm.
Isn't that off the classic schedule? Or does it?
It's the town road that we plow.
No, the map is on there, you can see the time. It's a private room.
The problem is, David, we're, we're shorthanded as it is, plowing, and I think it's, I like to see what Jeff has to say about this, but I, I don't want to commit.
Jeff and Woody had spoken about it. So Jeff and Woody had talked about it, and Jeff can tell us further what their discussion was, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we should, I.
So anyway, we have a request from them to have it plowed, because it still has a lot of use down there in the winter, and they have nobody to do it. So, whether Jeff and a one-towner, one of his workers, or Woody, it is town property, we'd like it opened up, same as we do at Kimball Pond. They do plow out that area. And I'm not sure, somebody plows the Gorapond boat reef, I don't know if the state does that or if we do it.
I think they, Jeff can probably speak on it, but Karen Road is the route that they go through from Gary Road.
Yeah.
And because it's so narrow, they have to go literally through to the open end, which is the boat launch, and they use the boat launch area to push the snow off.
Which isn't narrow anymore, it's huge now.
Yeah.
And Kimball Pond's pretty narrow going through too, but it is an open area, they plow that one as well. I don't know if there's any other areas we do in town, but.
To me, that would be the lowest priority in plowing.
It, it is, it's not even done during the storm, like a day after is fine to go open it up.
As long as we're not paying overtime, we're paying contract workers, are we?
Nope. Either one, I don't think you need it.
But the thing is, how did they do it in the past?
I just told you.
Yeah, but that's only two, three years, I mean, it's been going on for more than that.
I don't know, if you can read that letter, it kind of gives you a breakdown.
And the thing is, as far as plowing that parking lot out, the town forest has a huge checkbook, so I wanted to put it to the record. Why aren't they, why can't they hire someone to do it?
They don't have a huge checkbook right now.
What's, what's?
Is that KTFCA area or town forest? KTFCA has seventeen thousand dollars in their fund.
Yeah, which is made to maintain that property with how it's done up around those fields, the remainder and the life of that property.
Yeah.
They just log the properties.
Now, the parking lot that I'm aware of, that I think is on the private road, is that something that the town should be doing if we're going onto a private road to turn?
Our access to it through a private road.
Excuse me?
Our access to that property is not through a private road. Our access to that property is not through a private road.
It's not a town maintained class five road.
It's a town, it's a town maintained road.
Holiday Shore stops, and it's shown on that, that it stops about at the last byway, probably right after Mark Lang's house. And as you're going right, the area of that private area is maintained by the three houses or now four houses that wrap around the back. They have been viewers that they will maintain that private area leading up to their house.
This town, this map doesn't even show it, right?
Well, I'm concerned, I don't wanna plow roads, which, I mean, we've gotten the same predicament on Guinea Road, you know, maintaining and plowing that road in the past. And the thing is, once we get, I mean, people can't build on Everett Road because it's a class six road, and the thing is, because we don't wanna approach plowing it. I, I don't think it's right for, we should be plowing class six roads.
Well, let's ask Jeff, you know more about the road.
All right, I'll defer my question to Jeff. There's some current concerns, that's all. Especially when we're so short, plowing people too.
You can't, you can't spend municipal monies on blocking class six road.
Which is what we found out we had to do it for fifteen or eighteen years.
You don't wanna make that mistake again. Fool me once, but not twice.
It's easier to say no.
The other thing is, he sends in here, they can already sign up and tell them, but it's not. Jeff, um. You just came in, but we happened to go to the, the only thing we have on the mailbox item tonight. And it's a plowing of the KFTC, um, parking lot down there. And apparently, they had a, a guy that, as you know, the winters, uh, before this winter weren't that huge, and they had two inches or four inches of snow and it kinda melted in between, they have a local guy down there doing some of the plowing down there.
And it was paid too.
The local guy?
It was on there, they used to pay for it out of their maintenance money.
And, um, so anyway, apparently, he doesn't wanna do it now. And they asked for somebody to plow it, Woody went down and plowed it this last week. And is the road there a town road going to that? That turns into a private section?
Right at the end of Holiday Shore, where the pavement ends, it stops being town maintained. There's several houses up there, and it's all on them to maintain, it's a paper road, so to speak.
So we shouldn't plow, cause it's not a class five road?
Well, they've been plowing that, and they will continue to plow that. But beyond that point, there is a parking area that was created a lot of years ago for the concave town forest.
Yeah, but well, we're trying to determine whether it's you guys or, um, the transfer station plowing it. Shouldn't we be plowing that with town equipment?
Probably with parking lot.
Yeah, the parking lot's two different issues. You're talking a road that's a paper road, that's a town maintained road, that you have to cross over to get to that. My answer to that would be no, we shouldn't be plowing that. The parking lot, I mean, I think it's unfortunate, because we've started to collect a lot of properties and developing the recreational areas. And there's been no plan on how they're gonna maintain them going forward.
Can you tell us, you do plow, um, by Kimball Pond, correct?
We plow the boat ramp at Kimball Pond, because the fishing game does not do it, even though it's a boat ramp. If we don't do it, the cars park a lot at Kimball Pond Road, and it creates quite a hazard, only, you know, for everybody else, so. We get in the habit of plowing that out. Yeah, out of necessity, not because, but look at it, something to do.
Same thing on Gore Pond?
Same thing on Gore Pond.
Those are the only like three you plow?
There's a third one that Brett St. Clair asked me to do a number of years ago, it's up at Bella Brook, it's just a little knockoff area right off, right on the edge of Grapevine Road, it's basically a little short little area to plow in there, because they developed a parking, uh, a hiking trail there. The agreement I have with him is, we do it when we get to it, it's definitely not a priority.
So my question is, apparently, I don't know if you talked to Woody this week, um, but apparently Woody did this this last week. And he doesn't seem to mind doing it, would you rather him do it after a storm sometime mid-week, so it's not overtime? Or would you guys rather do it, or should we not do it at all?
That's a weird question.
Well, the, the, the recommendation at the bottom of the, the recommendation, one of the recommendations was a second possibility, is to put up a parking lot closed for the season. And it's an end done deal.
I mean, I, I kinda think that defeats the purpose of the recreation area, cause it's a, a full year recreation.
And you're gonna find people parking on the private portion of road.
And that's what happened years ago, they used to park at the end of Holiday Shore Drive, I'm talking a long time ago. When that first developed as a recreational area, and all the neighbors down there, it was hard on them. They lost their ability to navigate the road, because they're narrow and all that. So they created that parking area, kind of a, you know, ad hoc parking area just to get around, and the guy, whoever was kind enough to plow it, plowed it for a bunch of years, and that's what happened. I mean, I, like I said, we keep we keep adding stuff to this with no plan on going forward, and unfortunately, it all falls on the highway department, highway department gets the call. You guys could do this, you could do, I don't mind doing it, it's all taxpayer money, it's for our residents. I mean, if, if you feel that we should do it, we'll do it, but we're not gonna do it when somebody, Suzie or Joe calls up and says, hey, I couldn't park my car at the concave hotel forest, you gotta get down and plow. You know, we'll do it after the storm's over or whatever. If Willie, Will, Woody is willing to do it, and he's got the time to do it, that's fine, less off, off, on our plate, as far as I'm concerned. But I, we can't legally drop our plow and plow that access road. It does sound silly, that if we're going down there and that isn't plowed, to plow that parking lot, to not plow. But by the time we get there to plow that parking lot, they would have taken care of that.
The owners, the homeowners.
Yeah, because they have to access, I think there's four, maybe five homes up there.
At least four now.
So, yeah, that's, that's where I'm at, like, whatever the, the town wants us to do, we'll do.
I guess we'll do a consensus in the board to plow the parking lot, keep people from parking on the private road.
How many complaints have we seen, received from that? And then what is their plan for recreation?
Well, they've been plowed, that's why there hasn't been any complaints.
This was the first week and that's why it came up, we had two complaints.
I know, like Jeff is saying, the people are gonna park on that private road around the corner. We're gonna get complaints from the homeowners.
Yeah, that's a problem.
And that's, I, I would support the homeowners that way, I, I feel like. But the thing is, uh, I don't wanna pay overtime for a driver to down there and.
We've already said that.
No, I, I know, but the thing is, um, uh, the transfer station manager had ten hours overtime, how much was that attributed to this?
None of it, it was after the storm was done.
No, but what I'm saying is, he works forty hours a week, he had ten extra hours. Obviously, he bills up forty hours, so we're paying double, I mean, overtime to have the plow. I'd rather have the transfer station do it a couple days later at regular hours. I mean, excuse me.
I was just gonna say, whoever, whatever department does it, it's gonna cost the town money. It's a town vehicle and it's a town wage. I, personally, this overtime thing, I think is splitting hairs, yes, we wouldn't, we wouldn't work after hours to go down there and plow it. We would fit it in during our daylight hours.
Remember, Jeff might have plowed the whole weekend too, so this guy might be working on overtime as well.
This last storm, if you don't mind me interrupting, was unusual, it started on a Saturday night, went all the way through basically till Monday morning, Monday morning was a holiday, so there was a lot of overtime in that, but things usually don't happen that way, you get some overtime, some regular time. How often is overtime really gonna be an issue with a snowstorm? And you can break it down, how many snowstorms are we gonna have, you know, that whole thing. But like I said, if you.
The transfer station's a little different, they have to clean up before people come in.
Yeah, and that's, that has an operating schedule that they have to do, this is just a place for people to park. And like I said, I, I have no problem. Honestly, we're not looking for anyone to do it. We're pretty, our hands are pretty full as it is right now, but if that, we add that to us task, it's not gonna make a break that highway department, we'll get it done.
Can I just ask, if we continue to use the transfer station truck to do additional plowing, other than the necessary plowing for that department? And that prob, that truck breaks down, how do we handle that piece of equipment that we need?
True, Woody's equipment maintenance, just like any, anytime we would do it, it'd be Woody's maintenance bug.
I just know that I hear people who have plows, that weight and that additional travel and pushing, it wears on your, your equipment. And is that equipment sturdy enough to?
It is, the truck was set up for it.
Like I said, if this is a vacation, we'll do it. Tell me what you'd like me to do, that's all.
I, I have no problem either way, I, I am just disappointed that we keep expanding our recreation areas and the highway department gets the call, hey, can you do this for us? We got a new one down off of, that, somebody created a parking area off of Guinea Road for that complex of land that the town has got easements and bought through the Curvers and the Curver family. And there's a couple other pieces down here. And we've got a call from the conservation commission about some dead trees that they feel are a hazard, and they wanna know if the highway department can arrange to have somebody come cut the trees down. And this is on a class six road where. Where, where we know we've had issues, so it's like, again, they're looking to us all the time to remedy some of their issues.
You're the man, yeah.
No, I, I mean, I just, I, I think they should develop a plan of their own, on how they're gonna maintain some of this stuff moving forward, that's all. Now, like I said, plow, just say the word, you want us to plow, we'll, we'll do it.
I think the consensus of the board, uh, should be that doesn't matter whether it's your department or the transfer station department. And I think that doing it, um, after the storm, when you guys have time to do it appropriately, is the time thing to do.
But I, what I would like to do is have a decision, who's gonna do it? So we don't have to want, oh, did you go do it this time, or did this, or did I drive all the way up there, or it's already done, or?
Woody said he didn't have a problem, and I don't see a problem to do that truck.
Forty's fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Like I said, one last thing we gotta.
Jeff, I'm not gonna give consensus on it, I think Jeff has got the right solution, that says, the, the forest committee, that all these forest groups gotta get together develop a plan for, what are we gonna do for recreation, what parking areas needed for the winter? And they need to get together, get their act together, and I think it's, I think we're doing it willy-nilly here, and then he's gonna get a call and who's, who's gonna be paying for that tree, and who's, who's gonna pay for our truck when it breaks in that area? Yeah, town will, it's all town money, but the thing is, there are different pots of money in town.
And like I said, it, none of it's the end of the world, it's, it's the end of it, it's, it's for the good of the townspeople. Some people from out of town too, which is fine, and we are developing these recreation areas, we want people to use them, we're promoting them. But that's the other half of it, it has to be a plan to.
And I would ask.
Whatever level of maintenance.
Exactly.
So Mike, what we're trying to get to tonight is getting somebody to plow it, so the people aren't parking on the private portion out at the end of Holiday Shore to go and walk up there.
Have we had any complaints from the, from the residents?
We haven't had that situation.
Just today, uh, this week, just this week was the first time. Well, it was one, through a, a department head, she called me from her day work and said somebody from Manchester was complaining that the parking lot was not clear, and I had never heard any, um.
Well, from Manchester, they can go up sand.
My, my, my other concern and, and I think the board needs to make it very clear, is that if we're driving through a paper road, we cannot drop our blade to get through to the parking area, we're just gonna be.
Think we already beat this over the head.
The thing is, I, I would just say, I'm in consensus, as long as, I don't want you traversing an un, unplowed road to the parking lot, if it's not plowed, don't traverse. I, I understand, understood.
All right, let's move on to the next subject, which is, uh, you have an update for the truck.
Me? Again?
You broke it again?
Well, this is gonna be a short meeting.
Yeah, this is short, I just wanted to give you a, a little bit of an update.
Is it the brand new one?
Yeah, we've got a, an issue. There's a shifting issue with it.
It's an automatic, right?
Yeah, we had it delivered and put it into service a, um, two or three storms ago. Pete is operating it and, uh, got, didn't quite make it all the way through the first storm. It locks itself in a low gear and it won't up shift correctly. Everything on these now is electronic, the transmission talks to the truck, the truck talks to that. They refer to it as a handshake, everything has a handshake, and it, it's, it's high-tech, and when it's working, it's beautiful. But for some reason, this is one of those that has a bug. The dealer that we bought the truck from, the day it struck, they were working with us, very cooperative, trying to remedy it. They've sent a road guy out, and he's back down to Manchester now, they thought they had it fixed last Friday, Pete and I went down to pick it up. We brought it home, we started bringing it home, it didn't get out of Manchester, and it acted up again, so they got it back in there. And like I said, it, it, they're not giving us a hard time, they're trying to work our way through it, but it is pretty discouraging. As far as I'm concerned, we bought a brand new truck and it is disappointing. I mean, I'm sure we'll get to the bottom of it, but it's just disappointing. And we had such good luck with the other one, the same exact brand and all that, it was like, oh, this is no brainer, we'll get this, it'll be perfect, but and again, I'm not saying we're not gonna overcome it, we will, but I just thought I'd give you an update. So it's been a challenge to plow these last few storms, but we've, we're getting it done.
You gotta think of the positive, there is a positive, you haven't hired that new replacement yet.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's been a challenge vehicle-wise, but we're, we're making it happen.
Speaking of replacement, you didn't have one person interested?
Well, you know, we got a couple of those, a guy that, a couple different people, I don't know if they're gonna work out or not. And anyway, I just, just wanted to give you an update where we are with that, I've been, and they're very receptive, they're not dragging their feet, I believe they're trying, but again, it's not a simple thing where they can just change this, there's also manufacturer warranty issues that come into it, so anything they do, they have to get. Somebody further up the chain to say, yeah, you can change that part, or no, you try to fix this before you change that part.
When do we, there's, there's a whole pot, chain of command. You gotta keep track of it, when do we declare the lemon and get our money back?
Well, yeah, I mean, we're all, I believe we're a long ways from that. I believe, I honestly do.
It's just aggravating when we pay.
Yeah, exactly.
Money for a truck, and then all of a sudden, it's, you got your first couple of storms. And somebody says, wasn't that the new truck on the back of the record?
My, my company upgraded our fleet to these new ones, and I gotta tell you, we had more trucks on the side of the road, brand new trucks, than we ever had with the old ones.
It's kind of, everything has gotten so technical. And the biggest problem that they're finding with this is they plug the computer into it, but it doesn't trip a code to tell them which direction to go. And that's, that's the hard part, because they have to try some, and like I said, I, I, it's way over my head on it knowing what they're doing, but they are working with it, and we will get it resolved.
We'll be optimistic, they can solve the problem.
We will get it resolved, but it's just, again, very frustrating and disappointing.
And, and nobody knows how to run it, you know, now everything's automatic.
Oh, yeah.
So you can't fix it like you used to?
But again, but, but the operator doesn't know how to, how to shift.
That's partially why we went. All, all I can tell you, any organization is, is gravitating that way, they're a very nice product, they work very nice. Everything's tied together, but also, the driver abilities has changed a lot. And they're a proven thing, it's not a, a lot, I mean, you know, shame on me, I guess I could have dug my heels in and ordered a standard and all that, but it limits. Who would hire one going forward?
It narrows your.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean that's gonna cure the problem. This is an electrical issue.
Well, hopefully, you get some resolution, uh, sooner than later.
Well, yeah, that's, that was my goal, I thought we were all set.
As opposed to snow on Saturday.
Yeah, I hope so.
Plus, we have elections coming too. You know, you know what happens on election days.
Yeah, well, hopefully, we'll get a snowstorm, the moderator will call the day.
Does moderator call it off?
No, never.
So that's all, I just wanted to add, you know, I mean, her name. I hadn't heard anything, I didn't know which truck it was when they started talking, so.
It's a brand new one.
I'm kinda happy that it's a brand new one.
Oh, it is full warranty, there's no, yeah. But again, discouraging.
Okay.
That's all I got for those two comments.
Anything else on the agenda for us, Jeff?
Not as far as I'm concerned, unless you.
No mailbox complaints or anything?
We won't talk about that, we just very clearly state facts and that, the rules, that's it, stop.
Well, I mean, that, now we've got snow, we've got a tremendous issue with snow and snowbanks and all that, and people forgot that we have snow.
For the, for the record.
They seem to, when they plow the driveways and stuff, they, they think they should give the snow back to the town and the town plow, because he puts it in my yard. You know, it's not really.
Could, for the record, could you just review the, uh, the policy on replaced mailboxes for the record?
We don't replace mailboxes.
Thank you.
You don't have a line item in your budget?
We don't have a line item.
I, you don't understand when we explain the policy.
Yeah, for the most part, I mean, I think they should move their mailboxes further off the road. A lot of people feel they put it right on the edge of the road, and that's a pretty risky business. Cause you're talking a game of inches with a snowplow. And we're on these narrow roads where our plows just barely fit, and you got cars coming at you, so sometimes, it's gonna happen. And we're on these narrow roads where our plows just barely fit, and you got cars coming at you, so sometimes it's gonna happen. And I mean, if it happens to you a couple of times, I would.
Think it would move your mailbox back.
My, my mailbox got taken out this last storm.
Yeah.
And I know someone else's mailbox got taken out, and they said they were gonna come to see Lean about getting reimbursed, and I said, you gotta be kidding me.
Yeah.
Mine went down, and what it is, is the force of the snow being pushed.
Yeah, as long as it's not the plow.
Yeah, exactly, 'cause mine was not hurt. It was just ripped off, and guess what? It went right back on real quick. It's not a big deal.
I'm sorry it happens.
Yeah, but you gotta expect it.
I just wanted for the, for the public, you know, public sees this, I just wanna make sure they know that.
I mean, none of our drivers do this intentionally. They're always going out there saying, I'm gonna hit these mailboxes.
Not like Manchester where they hit seven in a row.
Well.
Get a granite post.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to public.
I wouldn't get a granite post.
That was supposed to be just a joke, but any public comment?
Yeah.
Nothing? Uh, bring it back to Lean and the board. Justin, anything for us?
Nothing.
Come up with something. You only have one more meeting. Mike, you have that?
I, I think it's good today.
All right, I'm good as well. Make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-one forty.
Oh, it's such a.